Good evening and welcome to the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 6:30 PM Tuesday, December 20, 2011. At this time, I'd like to invite you to join us for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Madam Chair, before we have the invocation, I'd like to make a announcement that the plane crash that happened in Texas happened to be the sister of one of our longtime police officers who went to work with the DA's office, Brian Thornton's family. That was his sister, his nieces, nephew, and his brother-in-law that died in that plane crash. Now, I hope that we can remember them forever.
Did you hear what I said, Chris?
The brothers, yes, sir.
And also, the father of the woman that was killed is also, it works in our community service department. But thank you for bringing that to our attention. Commissioner Stan?
Yes. Dear Father, Lord Jesus, thank you for this day, Lord. Lord, I heart so heavy for the losses that we have incurred in our own community. Lord, I pray you be with both of the families, Lord. I pray for the victims of the plane crash, be with them in this season, Lord. I just pray you be with them and carry them through this season, Lord. But more importantly, Lord, thank you for this season. We know without Jesus, there would be no season. Lord, I pray also that you just combine our hearts and our souls and our minds to do your will tonight, Lord. We ask these things in your son's most precious name, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for an acceptance of the agenda. Motion by Mr. Holmes and a second by Mr. Holder, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. At this time, I'd like to make the following announcement. The following item was advertised but will not be heard at this meeting, the Unified Land Development Code text amendment, ULDC-AM-11-09, and ordinance by Henry County, Georgia to amend Chapter Two, Section 2.01.05A, mixed-use district as it pertains to not allowing or prohibiting a single use on a lot or parcel within the mixed-use zoning district in accordance with Sections 12.02.11 and 12.03.00 of the Henry County Unified Land Development Code. If you're hearing reference to this item, it will not be heard at this meeting and will be advertised for a future meeting. I'd also like to thank Commissioner Holder for chairing the meeting yesterday. Vice Chairman Holder, it's the first meeting that I have missed in my seven years on the board and certainly something that I didn't want to do, as you could tell by my voice. But I just returned from Israel on Sunday and Monday morning at 9:00 AM was probably not in very good condition to chair a meeting, but I thank you for stepping in and doing that. At this time, we do have a proclamation that we want to present, and I'm going to ask Vice Chairman Holder if he would read the proclamation.
Be glad to, Madam Chair, and we are glad, I am glad that you're back. In appreciation of Angie Bailey upon the occasion of her retirement. Whereas Angie Bailey began her career with Henry County in 1990 as a clerk in the tag office and quickly moved up through the ranks, becoming a receptionist for the Board of Commissioners in 1991, an administrative secretary to the county administrator in 1992, and executive secretary in 1993. Whereas as an executive secretary, Ms. Bailey excelled in her duties, garnering excellent reviews during which she was recognized by her supervisors as professional, efficient, trustworthy, and an effective communicator, and considered by her peers to be a person of great compassion and integrity, thereby setting a high standard to follow. Says it well. And whereas in 1994, after being nominated by the county manager, Angie was named Secretary of the Year by the Henry County Chamber of Commerce, and whereas in 2005, in recognition of her capabilities and dedication, Ms. Bailey was transferred to Support Services where she became manager, and in 2006 was named interim administrative division director for Social Services. In 2008, she took on an additional role as Human Resources Director. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners wishes to congratulate Angie on a long and accomplished career and express its sincerest appreciation to her for providing exceptional service to the county and its citizens for the past 21 years. Be it further proclaimed that the Henry County Board of Commissioners wishes Angie great health and happiness as she embarks on the next chapter in her life. And Angie, you've been here longer than I have, but I remember when I came here, you were in the office with Ms. Sarah Austin. Y'all were friends over in the old building. That's, we thank you for all of the years of service very much.
Thank you. You'll come over?
You don't think you're going to get out of line enough not having pictures?
Moving on to Planning and Zoning Services, the Gryffindor LLC of McDonough, Georgia requests an appeal to overturn the denial of a variance to reduce the minimum land area for a commercial kennel within a C3 zoning district for property located at 125 McDonough Parkway and Land Lot 157 of the 7th District. Our presenter is Sherry Hopson Matthews, Director of Planning and Zoning, Exhibit Number 16. Good evening.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members. The request before you this evening is an appeal to the denial of a variance request that was issued by our zoning advisory board on September 8, 2011. Ms. Sherman Matthews has indicated the Gryffindor LLC submitted a request to expand upon an existing pet grooming business that they are currently operating on McDonough Parkway. The applicant expressed an interest in adding pet boarding as one of the additional services in addition to the pet grooming facility. At the time that he submitted his business license request, it became apparent that the minimum land area requirement for a pet grooming facility was two acres, and the applicant is only on 1.465 acres. So the applicant submitted a request to the zoning advisory board, and in return, the zoning advisory board recommended denial, and the applicant has since filed an appeal, which was received by our office on November 7. The applicant is seeking tonight to have the board overturn the denial and grant approval of the variance. I'll be more than happy to answer any questions.
Does any board member have a question? Mr. Holder?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The issue before us tonight, and the reason for the denial once again, was the minimum acreage requirement. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, I did a site visit, and as far as the property that is occupied by Gryffindor, that is only a portion of the strip center that this sits on, the 1.45 acres. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. It sits on 1.45 acres.
The entire center?
That is correct.
But what is leased or whatever by Gryffindor? Is it the entire building, or is it just a portion of the building?
It is my understanding that Gryffindor leases just a portion of the building. The applicant is here tonight, so if I am incorrect.
Yes, we lease just a portion.
Okay, and I'll ask that question when it's his time. But that is a question that I have, but again, the main, the only reason for denial by the ZAB was the acreage requirement?
Yes, sir. And, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
What is the reason for the two acre requirement?
I think, and certainly I hope that I'm correct in this, when the Unified Land Development Code was developed, I think the intent was for your large-scale commercial kennels. I'm not sure if any consideration was given to pet grooming facilities that may at some time have individuals come in and house or put their individual pets. But again, I think the intent was for those freestanding facilities, and we didn't really take into consideration maybe those small businesses that wanted to operate in a strip center and then at some point upgrade to a larger facility.
Mr. Holder?
One other question, Ms. Matthews. Is this subject property, does it lie within a watershed protection area such as Walnut Creek, possibly?
I do not think it does, Commissioner Holder.
I am not showing in the staff report that it does lie within a watershed district.
It does not.
It does not, no, sir.
Any further questions for Sherry? If not, if the applicant or the applicant's representative could step forward. If you would, please state your name for the rapport.
My name is Quentin Griffin.
Would you like to add anything to what Ms. Matthews has already shared?
Yes, ma'am. First, I would like to say greetings to the board and everyone. I would like to start off by saying I'm requesting that the Board of Commissioners overturn the variance denial at the September 8 zoning advisory board meeting. We would have liked for the zoning advisory board to take into consideration just how unique our situation is. We're the only tenants in our building with first rights to the entire building. When I signed the leasing contract with Mr. Jerry Barber, it was under the impression that the building would eventually be entirely ours. So we have first right to the entire square footage of the building. We are not near any residential properties, and the, our land, the facility, the land that our facility resides on, if you walk further back, it's just more land and additional swampland. We are a small facility. Our boarding area is only about 100 square feet, and our outdoor area is only about 1,200 square feet. We have no outdoor runs or pens, and we only have four boarding kennels in which we can board our dogs in. Also, because of our hours of operation, the businesses that neighbor us, as well as the majority of businesses around us, are closed at the time the boarding would actually take place. The dogs spend most of the day inside, only going outside for 15 to 20 minutes at a time. We have been approved by the Department of Agriculture to operate as a commercial kennel. We ask that the Board of Commissioners take into consideration our unique situation and grant us the right to board dogs inside only. We already have dogs for grooming and daycare at our facility, and they're playing and interacting with each other, and we have not had a single complaint. We do not close until 7:30 PM, so sometimes many owners may not pick their dogs up till 6:30, 7:00, and at that time, all of the businesses have been closed for hours. It's very little difference in adding boarding. In conclusion, we cannot survive as a business without boarding. Without boarding, we will go out of business, and we will basically just be adding to the number of empty shelves or vacant buildings in McDonough instead of adding to the number of employed or resources or finances. We are just asking for a chance, just one chance, to prove ourselves, and we, sorry, I'm a little nervous, we're willing to accept any stipulations or parameters in which the board seems fit to place on us. We are willing to adjust to anything. We'd just like to have doggy sleepovers, and I will accept any questions at this time.
Does any board member have a question? Mr. Griffin? Mr. Holder?
Mr. Griffin?
Yes, sir.
A concern that I had, and I mentioned it to Ms. Matthews, was the fact that you do not lease currently that entire building, and I believe according to the staff report that you have 6,000 square feet roughly. Is that correct?
Sir, the entire building is 6,000 square feet. The portion that we lease is 3,000 square feet.
So you're leasing about half of it?
Yes, sir. With, and within our contract, first rights to the other half, so no one else can come into that building and rent it unless we're given the opportunity first. And no one else can rent the other space without knowledge of knowing that we are already there.
Let me ask you another question, then.
Yes, sir.
As far as, you said that you would be willing to any stipulations, and I'm not saying that this is what I would propose, but as a stipulation, would you be willing to take the entire building so that absolutely it would be a standalone facility, over 1.465 acres, that no one else would be on?
Yes, sir. I've had discussions with my landlord, Mr. Jerry Barber, and that would be a stipulation that we could definitely do. The only reason that we did not go further with leasing the entire building is, you know, obviously, it's going to be more money, and we did not have boarding. And boarding makes up the backbone of the business.
Any other questions? Mr. Alada, did you have a question?
How long have you been in business, sir?
We've been in business for two months on Wednesday. We opened October 22.
Okay. And when you leased the property, you were aware that this was potentially a problem, or it came up afterwards?
It came up afterwards. If, I would have probably never leased a property if I'd have known that. I would also like to add that I've worked at doggy daycares, I've worked at vet practices. The majority, most of doggy daycares are not on two acres of land because to better suit our customers, we try to be near apartments, condos, townhomes. Those type customers need our business the most because daycares are a great alternative to, as opposed to leaving the dog at home or in a crate all day.
I just have a question. Sherry, did we consider businesses such as this when we made the ordinance?
I don't think we considered individual commercial kennels located within strip centers, although it's a permitted use outright. I just, I'm not sure that there was any consideration when we looked at the minimum lot size. If this site were two acres, what he's proposing to do would be permitted. It would be something that is permissible. The only thing here is that he doesn't meet the minimum lot size, so the use would be allowable.
Mr. Alada?
And to that point, the acres we have here again is what, 1.1?
1.465.
Okay, almost an acre and a half. To that question, to that point, what is gained by another acre, half acre, if you would, from the standpoint of noise abatement, or what is it that's really gained by having an additional half acre added to a ready acre and a half? And it sounds like outside, you're not using much of the outside. Is that correct?
No, sir, I am not.
And is your intent to use more of it to have the dogs run around, or would you continue to use the 1,200, I think you said 1,200 feet?
Yes, sir. That's, that's all we're going to use.
Okay, the other, for you then, the other question is, you have the option to get 3,000 more square feet.
Yes, sir.
And at the present time, you only have four boardings?
Yes, sir.
Places for? What would you do with the other 3,000?
With the other 3,000, we would increase our play area size. We'll have additional play area size, so it'll be toy group, small dog, and then large dog. Also, we could add more kennels as to better pay the bills, so to speak.
When you say kennels, is that more overnight boarding, or is that?
Yes, sir. More indoor kennels, yes, sir.
So the four would go to what number, then?
I'm sorry?
The four that you presently have would go to what number?
Depending on the resources, the kennels are very expensive. I would probably start off with at least another five or six and probably go from there. The kennels are very expensive, so, you know, they're not, you just can't, they're not easy to purchase.
And Sherry, we have certain noise, variant noise ordinances and whatever else, and to the extent, the number of dogs, the amount of noise that was present, if you would, today or in the future, he would come under those, that ordinance and that noise, and from that, I would imagine he'd have to cut back what his business is at that time.
Yes, sir. And there's also stipulation under our commercial kennels that any type of outdoor runs or indoor runs, there has to be some type of soundproofing that is required, so he would have to meet that regulation as outlined in the code.
Okay. So all the regulations or notices there, and for a half acre more, we're not really gaining a whole bunch more for small situations, is what I'm hearing. Okay, thank you.
I would also like to add that I have made it, used soundproofing material I have put up in my facility as well, and I have a boarding petition here, signed by most of the businesses around us, as well as members of the community and customers that come by that would really appreciate if we were able to board. So all the businesses that are around us, we've got them to sign our petition saying that it's okay, we don't have a problem with you boarding, or most of them.
Are there any additional questions for the applicant? If not, this is a public hearing, and at this time, I'd like to ask if there's anyone in the audience who wishes to either speak in favor of or opposition to the applicant's request. Yes, sir. If you would, Mr. Griffin, if you could have a seat for just a moment?
Yes, ma'am.
If you could, step to the, to the microphone, and please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, ma'am. My name's Frank Patrick, and we have a business next door to the, where they're trying to put the dog kennel in, and we just feel that it's really not appropriate for the area right there. The, the building backs right up to us, we keep our doors open all day long, I mean, there's already dogs barking now. And, you know, I went through the requirements, and even a standalone, I mean, a veterinarian clinic in a shopping center, it says that outdoor runs are prohibited, boarding's prohibited, and the same deal. A freestanding veterinarian clinic says that, you know, drains have to be connected to this outdoor run. Last time I was here, he said they didn't, they didn't have an outdoor run, and that's what that is right there. That wasn't there until he started to lease the space. I mean, there's, there's two buildings over there, it's not just one building, there's two buildings over there where they are, and, you know, that comprises the whole 1.47 acres or whatever it is. And we just think that a kennel should stay with the two-acre deal. It's more for soundproofing, I think, than anything else, because, I mean, like I said, we keep our doors open all day long, and it's already started. I mean, I have nothing against him, but, I mean, I just have something against the kennel being right there.
Can you show us on the picture where your business is located?
Yes, ma'am. I mean, that's taken really out of the back, the side of our business right there, and it's facing to the right.
Okay. Okay, backs right up to it.
On that one.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who wishes to speak either for or against the applicant's request? Yes, ma'am, if you would, step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Ashley Wagner, and I was his manager at Paw's Playhouse, which is a doggy daycare boarding grooming facility for about four years. And do you need my home address, or?
Yes, please.
Okay. I live 978 Lindberg Drive, Atlanta, Georgia, 30324. And when we worked at Paw's Playhouse, we had very similar stipulations, like especially dealing with noise ordinances, and Quentin was somebody I could go to to make sure that the noise ordinances were being taken care of. He's somebody, he's the only person, when you're in a doggy daycare kind of industry, like you love your dog more than, you know, most people do, kind of. He's the only person that I would trust with my dog of anybody. And, I mean, I live up in Atlanta, and I will be the first person, if he's able to board, to bring my dog down here. It just took me an hour and a half to get here, wonderful traffic, loved it. But I would be that person to bring my dog down here because I know my dog is in safe hands, and she's going to make kisses at night from him because I know he does that because I've seen him do it. Like, this is, this is, of all people, to open a doggy daycare boarding grooming facility, he is the best person for it by far. Like, if I could have the funds to do it, I would have him as well. Like, it would be he and I. Like, he is amazing. He, I mean, he is a straight-line kind of guy. Like, I can't say one negative thing about him at all in how he handles dogs, because I'm very into critiquing other people, and he's amazing. Like, if I trust my dog with him, and I, I have a hound dog too, so she's kind of like hmm, but, I mean, he makes sure there is, you know, the doggies remain quiet and everything, and, I mean, they be inside the majority of the time. Like, he's just an upstanding citizen to have a boarding daycare grooming facility in Henry County.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to speak for or against the applicant's request? If not, Mr. Griffin, if you'd come back forward.
I would also like to add just one thing. Mr. Reynolds was talking about noise. Patrick Reynolds rents bucket lifts, outriggers, jackhammers, bobcats, tractors, skid steers, excavators, mortar mixers, ditch diggers, floor grinders, concrete grinders. They have a plethora of very loud tools that they maintenance and service and rent to customers. Just the other day, my kennel staff and I was in our play area, and we had, we heard a very loud noise coming from Mr. Patrick Reynolds. While encountering, well, my computer's not acting right here now, but I have a recording of the types of noise that comes from Patrick Reynolds, and just mentioning these, these power tools, equipments that I've mentioned, if anyone knows, you know, jackhammers and bucket lifts, those are some, those are loud, loud machines, and I don't, I don't have a problem with him making that much noise. And just to add, I do, and I will do everything that I can to meet all noise ordinance requirements to make sure that I'm not disturbing any of my neighbors.
Does anyone else have a question for the applicant or staff?
I'd like to ask if there's anything to come back.
I'd like to ask Ms. Matthews to come back. Ms. Matthews, Mr. Patrick made reference to the fact that both of the buildings sat on the 1.465 acres. Is that correct? Are both buildings sitting on one parcel of length?
Let me look at the survey real quick.
Looking at the site plan that I've just put on the screen, it does appear that there are two buildings located on this one track. And there's a building one and a building two.
I do not have a survey, so I can't tell if those buildings both fall with, on that one track. But it does appear that there are two buildings on that one site plan that they've provided.
Mr. Griffin, are you, are you aware, is that right? Do both buildings sit on the 1.465 acres or is it just one?
Um, to be absolutely positive, I'm not sure, but I would say yes. And also, the other building, Patrick Reynolds, I also had them sign our boarding petition as well stating that we, we are, if, if we are or not, they are very comfortable with us boarding. So they signed the petition as well, knowing that we're going to board. Yes, sir. I mean, Jerry Barber, Power Plus PPI, they're at the bottom there. Those are, that's pretty much their entire staff.
Mr. Chairman, any other comments you'd like to make?
Sherry, I think the plaque you're referring to is showing 7,500 square foot building. These buildings are actually 6,000 square foot buildings. So I'm not sure this is, is an as-built plat. You see?
The plat that's actually on the screen is what was submitted when the building was actually constructed. So if it's less than the 7,500, and that could, that certainly could be the case, but this is what they submitted at the time that they submitted their building plan information, which is the only thing that we have. I know the applicant did indicate 6,000.
Right.
But our records showed the 7,500.
Okay. I mean, just for another comment, today I popped in on Mr. Griffin, and I was totally unannounced when I came in. I wasn't even sure, and I knew you had dogs on the inside because you were in daycare business, but I never heard an animal until we got beyond the second door is when we saw the dogs. And was there four, maybe five dogs there total?
Uh, yes, sir, it was four.
And I did see the run, but to be honest with you, the place was spotless and it didn't, it didn't have that smell. And that part really impressed me. But everything was clean, but I, I was totally unsolicited just walking in off the street. So I had a tough time finding out exactly where you were at because I didn't hear no animals, but you had dogs in the, inside. So that's when I even made the comment. I can see where you were going to put your future kennels back through there, but I, I don't think this building's 7,500 square feet. I think it's probably closer to the 6,000 square feet.
Mr. Holder, would you have a comment?
I have a question. The Power Plus International that signed this petition, that is not Patrick Reynolds, is it?
No, sir. I, I, I'm sorry, I'm on a mistake.
And I want to ask Mr. Patrick, you have, have you signed this petition? I don't.
No, he's, we didn't, yeah.
Okay.
We didn't expect.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Mr. Alata?
Are there the acreage requirements for equipment rental companies?
I'm just, as long as they meet the minimum requirement for commercial zoning, which is 10,000 square feet, then they're fine.
So for the amount of equipment or whatever else that's placed there, whatever levels of noise, whatever else, there's no requirement to them, but for the dog kennel or whatever there is?
And, and I would certainly need to verify. I'm not sure of Patrick Reynolds, what their zoning is. But if they do have outside storage, then that certainly is something that we would need to look at, depending on if they're zoned C2 or C3. If there's an issue with noise, then that would be more of a code enforcement issue that they could certainly address.
But again, there's no restriction on size for commercial rentals and whatever else, but there is for boarding dogs, is what I'm hearing.
Yes, sir.
At that. Okay. I guess my question for is this. In order to overturn, how do we go against our ordinances to approve something that is specified the way it is? I'm sitting here as a commissioner who wants to follow our ordinances and rules and whatever else, and I'm being asked to not do that. And I'm trying to find out how I can vote in the affirmative to do such. If, not asking you to vote for me, but I guess I'm trying to figure out where is, what is the recommendation of staff or somebody to tell me that there's a way around not complying with two acres?
Okay, I'll take the question. That has been a long concern of mine, Commissioner Alata. If we are asking the board, if staff is asking the board to do something that staff itself cannot do under the ordinance and there's no leeway for the board to do it, I'm not sure if the proper avenue is the appeal versus having an amendment to the language of the code come before you. And I think we talked about this in the last board meeting. When this type of request come in, it's important for our staff to make certain that we are directing the citizen in the right path in order to get to the ultimate goal of the, that the applicant or the citizen is seeking. So to that end, I'll defer back to Sherry and on Michael Harris to answer the question of where in the ULDC does it allow such a variance to take place? And if not, then perhaps the proper avenue would be to be a text amendment as opposed to this process of an appeal of a variance denial.
The applicant originally, when their request was submitted, they submitted a request for a variance, which would be the process. Variances are based on development regulations that you may not be able to meet. In this case, the applicant applied for a variance. And the next process would be if the applicant felt that an error was made by the zoning advisory board, they have the right to file an appeal to the board to have that decision overturned, which is what the applicant did in this case. Typically with our text amendments, we advise applicants to come forth with a text amendment if they're asking us to allow them to do something that is not permitted outright in our code of ordinances. In this case, the applicant could operate a commercial kennel. The only thing is he doesn't meet the minimum development regulations as such. And so that's why the applicant applied for a variance and hence the variance being denied, our ordinance allows for an appeal to be filed and that appeal to be heard by the board.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I could just add one more thing. The, the noise that I hear from Patrick Reynolds, I'm sorry, I couldn't get my, my, my computer to work right. It's, it's very loud, like, like I said in mentioning the, the, the equipment that they actually rent. With that being said, I would do anything to please Patrick Reynolds. And just to let them know that if you guys are being disturbed by the dogs or whatever disturbs them, and which is confusing because we're, when the dogs are going to be boarded, they go, they're home. They close at 5:00. We don't close until 7:30. So, and we open up at 6:30 in the morning and generally I'm there before that. So when the boarding would actually take place, nobody's at any of the businesses or the establishments around us. So I would just like to add that. And, you know, if I had some time to, to get this to play, I could actually prove to you guys how loud the noise is that comes from Patrick Reynolds. And they do nothing to buffer their sound. There are no buffers. They, you know, they, they have, they don't have anything to make it less noisy. And obviously, if their door's up, the noise doesn't bother them that they're making from all their machinery. So I just wanted to add that. But I would definitely do anything to please these guys so, so we can have the rights for.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. If there's no further questions or comments from the board, Mr. Alata?
Going back to this request for variance, that is what is being requested, is a request for variance?
The applicant actually requested a variance through the zoning advisory board. The request tonight is to have the denial overturned. So he is appealing the denial that was rendered by the zoning advisory board for a variance.
For a variance. And that variance was to, instead of having two acres, being permissible at the 1.4 or whatever acres?
That's correct. The variance was to reduce the required minimum lot size from two acres to 1.465.
And that's just for a specific case as opposed to changing the entire ordinance for future people that would want to do this?
Right. This is just for this individual parcel located on McDana Parkway.
And so to the extent we grant it, instead of changing the ordinance, are we not in position where we're actually in the future going to be having to change it anyways?
Any applicant who wants to come before the zoning advisory board to request a variance is entitled to, to such. Certainly, if it is the desire of the board not to require the two acres, then certainly we should do a text amendment to change that, to state that commercial kennels shall be required to meet one acre or to have a 10,000 square foot requirement, or just keep it consistent with what's required for a standard commercial zoning designation.
What you said earlier, I think, is went to Mr. Commissioner Holmes' question, was that the two acre requirement was pretty much, he thought, for consideration of large kennels for boarding. And it appears that at large was much more than four, I would take it, or 10, 20 or something. Is there a way to structure that so that the numbers of boardings that would require 1.4 versus two or something like that is something for consideration?
Yes, sir. I certainly think it is. And I think one thing that I would need to do at a staff level is to determine when a license is issued through the state, is there a cap on the number of pets that are allowed to be within a facility? Because I would think that would be the only way that we could regulate having a minimum lot size or dictating if it's freestanding versus in a strip center.
That's actually true. When we received our kennel license from the Department of Agriculture, they put us, they only allowed us to have at maximum 40 dogs in the building at any given time. That was, that's in the actual kennel license that's in your packet that y'all have, that I submitted.
I, I guess I'd like to just say this out loud, isn't it? Everything you've said is you're willing to work with Patrick Reynolds and try to appease him and whatever else. It would almost sound to me that you need to sit down with them before asking for a vote on this subject and seeing if there's something you can work out with them before asking for that vote. Obviously, it's, I don't know how it's going to come out, but the subject of asking to not comply with the ordinances is something that I'm having difficulty with.
Mr. Bowman?
I think I got to comment on the, on the noise thing. And, I mean, I'm, I'm in the contracting business and I lease a lot of equipment from Patrick Reynolds, and I don't think that's going to make any difference to them. It's not going to make any difference to me on how I rule them, so I'll tell you that right now. But I think if we, you know, I think we're getting hung up on the wrong thing, which is the noise factor, because what if that was a, a sound studio or some type of studio instead of a dog kennel? Then they might be up here complaining about Patrick Reynolds' noise and the fact that they're doing an awful lot. And I don't, and you know, and I know, there's a lot of equipment. You got to work on all of it. You got to do a lot. I, you know, I understand that. I just, I don't think we need to be, you know, that we're, that the noise is a factor here. Because I, I will promise you, in the business, and I'm in, I'm in a business that creates a lot of noise, is that Mr. Patrick's business creates a lot more noise than four or five dogs barking. I mean, I'm sorry, I mean, I, well, I'm not sorry because this is true. I mean, it is what it is. But if, if that's the only reason we're talking here, then somebody else leases part of that building, you know, and they're trying to have something quiet, maybe some type of, you know, anything that would meet that requirement, then somebody may be in here with a noise ordinance problem against Mr. Patrick. So I think we need to, you know, I'm just saying from my standpoint, we need to kind of, you know, the, the noise is not the issue here. I think there's another issue underlying, but anyway.
What I've been asking is not about the noise. It's been the variance request from two down to a lesser acreage, noise or no noise. It's not going to be any less because it's two, whereas it is with one, you have a little bit more distance, if you would, from that. If that's, that's, I mean, it depends where it's placed on the building, whether the land. Mine is to say that is there a way to take the existing ordinance and have it changed to 1.4 acres when it is, as I think Sherry had said, that for larger versus smaller, actually quantifying the number of dogs that can be boarded on 1.4. And, and anything over that requires, anything more than that number of dogs being boarded would require the two, two acres. So it still has that, but with a subset in it. That's what I'm looking at, to find some type of common ground or, or mil ground to control the noise, if that's the issue that is the reason for the two acres.
If I could just follow up on Commissioner Alata's original question. Our unit of outland development code defines a variance as a grant of relief from the site design requirements of the ULDC related to dimensional standards for lots, building placement, building height, and parking spaces. So the applicant, when he applied for the variance, his intent was to get some relief from our design regulations in this case, which would be reducing the minimum lot size from the two acres to the 1.465. So I feel that that was the, the approach that he needed to take. Now, in the code, under section 11.0503, it's appeal of zoning advisory board actions. And it says, "An appeal of a decision of the zoning advisory board shall be processed as set forth in section 120500, which is appeals to the board of commissioners." So that is the reason why we took the applicant through this process.
And I understand, I appreciate that. And I just, again, I'm trying to sit here, what's the difference? Is there a way to create something, any ordinance that would allow it versus voting or variances or whatever else? That's all.
Mr. Holder?
I'd like to ask this question of the county attorney. I know on zonings, a denial requires a 12-month wait before they can bring it back. Is the appeal process the same way?
I don't think there's a similar requirement for appeals of variances. I've not known that to be the case. I've never seen that. On zonings, that's a matter of state law, that requirement that we've incorporated in.
But it's not a 12-month wait to bring the issue back?
No, sir, not the.
I think we're getting sidetracked on the fact of noise. I'm in the equipment business, very similar to what Mr. Patrick is. I know how much noise can be generated from a, an equipment store, whether it be rental or sales, makes no difference. If there's a shop, you're going to have noise. And I understand that completely. But remember what I asked initially. Why are we here and why are we hearing this appeal of the denial? It's based on strictly the size of the lot. That is it. We can, we can hammer to death the fact of noise, many other items. But I don't know how, with the ordinance, the way it's written today, that we can change that. Now, the reason for my question as far as the 12-month wait, if there's some way that we can look at the If there's some way that, um, we can look at the, not necessarily this situation, because I'm going to tell you, the worst thing this board can do is base zonings on a particular situation or a particular individual or, or, or situation. It's almost like a spot zoning and you cannot do that. But my point is, it may be something that we do need to revisit. Is two, is it two acres required? And that's the reason for my question about the watershed. I know there are various factors that factor in as to why some lots and some types of businesses require, have a minimum, uh, requirements as far as size. But with, the, the issue that's before us tonight is to either uphold the denial or reverse, overturn the denial of the ZAB based on that one issue, lot size. And am I correct on that matter of the, okay?
I believe that you can consider the variance request as a whole to make a determination to see if that, the variance is warranted. I don't believe that you're limited to the, the facts that staff rely upon to basis denial. You can, you've had a hearing tonight, so you can listen to all the things you've heard tonight in this hearing and make your decision accordingly. The very basis of a variance is the fact that there are very unique facts or circumstances that will warrant an exception to the general rule. And based upon what you've heard tonight, you all can make that determination.
Mr. Holder, this lies in your district and you have the option of upholding or overturning the advisory board's denial. And I'll look to you for a motion.
This is a tough one. I, I visited the site.
Say one, I hate to interrupt you, but is it possible that, that we can, that we can ask for this, for the decision to be postponed until maybe the staff can, can review and, and, um, maybe make some, some, some paperwork, um, differences? Because just like she said, when this two-acre law was put into effect, it was for these large upscale kennels with outdoor runs and, and dogs outside all the time. That's what that ordinance was put in effect for. Um, we're not, we're, we're nowhere near that. Um, so if, you know, we can postpone the decision if you guys.
And I'm glad it was your, your idea to make that, because the motion that I was going to have to make was to uphold the denial. Now, if you're willing to continue to operate, uh, not as a boarding, because that's what the, the problem is, then, um, then you need to request that it be tabled. You need to make the request.
I'm making that request. I, I am. Please, sir.
Given that, Madam Chair, I will make a motion to table until staff can review the ordinances.
Okay, we have a motion to table. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Sherry, I'd encourage y'all to move sort of quickly on this too, because I know his business is dependent upon it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is HPMC LLC of Stopbridge, Georgia, request to rezoning from RA Residential Agricultural to C2 General Commercial for property located at 1598 Highway 138 in Land Lot 94 of the 11th District. The request is for a commercial development. Our presenter is Brecka Johnson, planning and zoning exhibit number 17. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman, Madam Chair, and Board members. Yes, the applicant is requesting to rezone a piece of property from RA to C2 for the continued use of an existing tire shop, automotive repair shop, um, and to also utilize a, a secondary building on the property, which is currently used as a single-family dwelling. Um, the applicant would like to use that as a future commercial business, uh, which has not been site-specific. Uh, if you look to the, um, uh, the screen, you'll see that the zoning in the area ranges from, uh, residential agricultural to the north and the east. Uh, you do have Cutter's Mill Subdivision Two on the, um, west side of 138. And then to the south, you have a C3 zone piece of property, uh, the dogs and suds on 138, which was rezoned in, uh, 1986. Um, if I can, I'll just defer to the, um, aerial so you can get a better view of, of the location of the property and buildings. Um, as you can see, um, if you can see, um, there are some properties located to the north and the east that are currently vacant and undeveloped, um, or they're just large estate lots, um, and single-family homes to the, um, west side of the interstate. Um, the site plan currently reflects the buildings which have been on the property since the 1960s and 70s. Um, the tire shop has been in operation, um, I think off and on since, uh, over the last 40 years. And at that time, um, there was, uh, it was considered non-conforming. It currently is considered non-conforming, of course, because there is a use that is a commercial use on a residential piece of property. So the applicant is just coming in to rectify that and also to utilize the, uh, single-family dwelling as a commercial business, uh, which has not been specified. Um, the, um, there is currently county water and septic to the proper, uh, to the property. And, um, staff does support the continued use of the tire shop, uh, but we did recommend denial of the request, um, based upon the ordinance requirements and also the future land use map designation, which states that the property should be a rural residential, um, property in the future. And if I can defer to my future land use map, I'll put that on the podium. As you can see, for the future land use map, a majority of the property along 138, um, on this, at this portion of 138 is, uh, for future use of rural residential uses. Um, you will see further south, uh, at West Hemp Hill, at Hemp Hill Road and 138, you'll see that, um, that is an activity center where we, um, have wanted to, uh, drive our commercial businesses in the county. Um, however, I will add that the property has been in use for the last 40 years as a tire shop. Um, additionally, um, uh, they have also been, uh, I guess, paying property taxes per the tax records. Um, the C2 zoning that the applicant is requesting is not currently the, the minimum zoning needed for the current use. Uh, the C1, uh, zoning is actually all that is required to handle the zoning portion for the tire shop and even for an additional business, whether it be an office or, uh, some business, neighborhood commercial use. Um, if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any board member have a question for Brecka?
I have a question. March 2009, um, the planning and zoning board recommended, I guess, um, approval of C3. Can you, can you discuss that a little further?
Absolutely, Commissioner. Um, this, a request from this applicant did come in, in 2009 to request for C3 zoning. Um, at that time, it went before the zoning advisory board, once there was a favorable, favorable recommendation from staff for approval. And then the zoning advisory board approved the use, um, for specifically a tire shop and that no other commercial uses could go on that property. Um, it, uh, was tabled at the board of commissioners level and at that point, um, there was some withdrawal of the application and the applicant is coming back now to apply for rezoning and also to utilize the property for additional uses and not just the tire shop.
At that time, was there any plan to designate that area as, um, uh, commercial for, um, under the, uh, uh, land use plan?
Uh, Commissioner, no, there was not. Um, at the time, we had a, a previously adopted future land use map, which also showed, which showed the property for low-density residential. So it actually has become more restrictive in residential uses, uh, with no mention of commercial use at that particular location.
Does any other board member have a question? Mr. Bowman?
We've heard this, uh, you know, like, like Commissioner Holmes said, back in '09, I think that the, uh, I think, I think it, it can be a tire shop from now on. We've, we've never said that it couldn't be a tire shop. As long as they want it to be a tire shop, it can be a tire shop. But it's not current, even the, the new land use map is, it also states that it's RA. It's not, not that. And you know, how the C3, I've forgotten, 1986? I don't know. It was not, I mean, I was in the county, but I was working, so I wasn't up here, but, or at the other building. So I don't know how that happened, but, uh, is there any, is it, I mean, it can remain a tire shop. Is there any reason to change it?
Well, um, per the applicant, and I'm hoping that, um, our applicant can kind of shed some light on that, uh, when the initial request came in in 2009, the request was just to zone the property, meaning to bring it up to code so that they could generate business licenses that meet zoning requirements, uh, for the tire shop. Um, at this time, they're wanting to not only utilize the tire shop, the additional building or structure on the property, they'd like to use it for commercial use as well. And that's what would require the zoning to be in place versus them continuing to use the tire shop, which they could go ahead and continue to use without penalty.
Does anyone else have a question? Mr. Alata?
Just to clarify, um, so when the zoning board approved it, they approved it with conditions or just C3 and, or was conditions only never to be anything but a tire shop?
They, yes, that's correct. They approved it with conditions. Uh, one of them was that all buildings had to be brickstone stucco. Um, the other, uh, condition was that the property had, it could be zone C2 for the specific use of a tire shop, repair shop. Um, at that time, they could have asked, I guess, for C1 or C2, but I think in looking at the property to the south, it's zone C3 and it's a dog kennel. Um, so that was kind of the, the understanding with that.
And, and again, when the letter was then sent, authorizing them to continue to operate, having not gone through the full process, the letter states that, again, they can continue to operate in non-conformant?
That's correct.
With, with the zoning?
Yes, sir.
And that, again, is strictly for a tire shop?
Right. Until such time they wanted to make more, um, changes to the property or any changes to the property.
And then at that time, it would have to go again before the zoning?
That's correct.
Okay. So it nullified the zoning that was approved at that level?
Right. Or it would nullify their non-conforming status.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Holder?
Couldn't help but hear you talk about the zoning business being a dog kennel.
Yes, sir.
How many acres is this dog kennel located on?
Uh, it's roughly about two acres. Well, actually, it's a little less than that. It's about an acre, a little bit over an acre. Uh, and when it was rezoned, it was actually rezoned for a greenhouse, a plant nursery.
It was rezoned for a plant nursery and now there's a dog kennel in it?
Right. But a dog kennel is, is a permitted use under C3 zoning.
Was it a nursery? Did it take a C3 zoning for a nursery? Uh, never mind. At that best irrelevant about what we're talking about. I apologize. I'm sorry.
That's not, okay. And, and just, the applicant probably will reveal this to us, but what is the intended use for the rezoning?
Um, the continued use is.
No, the intended.
The intended use has not been specified. Um, the applicant did mention, uh, possibly an office for the tire shop or, uh, having someone come in to lease the building for an office or a barber shop or something similar.
He, he can, he can share that with us. Now, okay.
Any other questions for Brecka?
All right, if not, if the applicant or the applicant's representative would come forward and please state your name and address for the record. You have 15 minutes.
Madam Chair, Board members, I'm Phil Herbert. I'm representing, uh, HPMC LLC. Uh, the reason we, we asked for this variance, there's a couple of different reasons. Uh, when we purchased this business, it's been there for 30-plus years, uh, next door to us was a kind of a garden shop that had, sold playground equipment. Uh, after we bought the business and been there a while, they built a dog kennel. On the same property with our tire store is a, a residential home. And with the dog kennel next door to us, it's been extremely difficult to rent that as a single-family residence because of the dog kennel. And it's, it's a much bigger kennel than the previous gentleman had. It's, I think there are probably 30 or 40 dogs there. They're boarded there all the time. So it does get to be quite a racket. If you walk around the side of the building, feeding time gets pretty loud. So we were, uh, hoping that we could rezone it so that we could use the existing single-family home as a, uh, when we put a for rent sign out there, we had people stop that wanted to rent it as a, a beauty shop and one person wanted to rent it as a, uh, I think a tax office. And they came to get building, to get, uh, license and they couldn't get them because it wasn't zoned for that. So we had to go back to trying to find somebody to rent it as a residence and that's, it's currently residence or resident, but it's not, uh, a very good rental, rental property. The store, the tire store itself's been there for, for quite a while, serving that community. Uh, I don't know that any neighbors in the area oppose it. And I have, uh, you know, I understand the, and appreciate the future land use map and what it's trying to do, uh, but this is, this has been a business there for a long time. And I think when we originally in '09 tried to get it zoned, it was someone, and I don't recall who, I think approached us so that we would conform, because we were non-conforming when they're actually trying to do the map. And then it got totally, uh, off track and, and I wasn't well-versed in how everything worked. Not that I'm much better-versed now, but Brecka's done a great job of educating me. I know how it works and, uh, that's where we are. We just want to continue doing business as a tire shop and possibly rent that single-family home out as another, uh, income-producing, uh, business. We also have a concern that is, is, uh, things get going again in Henry County when the state comes along Highway 138 and decides to widen that. If they were to condemn part of our property, its, its value is commercial, is much higher, I would think, than as a, uh, agricultural residential. And we're trying to protect our investment. You know, we, we've been there, we hope to stay there, we, we have no real designs to further develop the property. There's not much room to do anything else there. We just want to use, utilize what's there to the best, uh, income-producing for our fertile business.
Mr. Herbert, you said, um, that, uh, it wasn't a very good rental property. Then you went, uh, on and said that you had a renter in the property?
We do have a renter in there now. It's, but it just has somebody in there.
What, what would be your intent, um, in terms, in terms of, uh, the property if you were granted the, um, the C2?
I would, uh, move the current renter out and put a, a sign out there and try and solicit another business to come in and rent that property.
You give me, give me an idea on what type of business you would try to solicit?
Yes, sir. The, uh, the last time we had a rental sign out there was, there were two different people came by. One person wanted to do a, a beauty shop, another one wanted a, a tax office. And that's all we were looking to do. And it, you know, they, a business like that wouldn't be affected by the dog kennel.
Do you need a C2?
C2 would, would do that.
For either one of those type of businesses or a C1 suffice?
A C1 would be acceptable. Yes, sir.
Yeah, we'd be, we would be fine with C1. We, we originally said C3 because that's what our, uh, our neighbor was and just thought it made more sense.
You wouldn't be interested in a car lot or anything like that for that particular property?
No, sir. There's really not that, that kind of room there.
Does any other board member have a question for Mr. Herbert?
I have a question for him. Sir? Um, which building is over the property line? Is that the, uh, would that be the home or the building?
Uh, it's the tire store.
Tire store? How much over the line is it?
It's like, I think like a, a foot over. And there's a, uh, there's a variance or an easement on the books for that, uh, being over. We had to get that. That's, you know, it's another thing, we looked at the buffers on that and, and no one could figure out how there's no buffer between us and the, uh, dog kennel either.
Does that affect any way your overall gross, um, acreage, with that building being over the line?
Uh, I don't, it's such a small, it's just the corner, like I say, I don't even think it's a foot of, the corner point of the building is over.
Is there sewer anywhere near this property?
No. I checked sewer. I don't think there's sewer anywhere. No. I checked sewer. I don't think there's sewer anywhere in the vicinity of that.
Okay.
Does any other board member have a question? Mr. Alata?
I understand what you said, and I probably don't, and that is, you're saying because you can't rent your house residential because of a dog kennel and the noise, you want to convert the rental to commercial?
That, as well as, is to get a higher property value. If the, if the state were to come by and condemn part of our property for widening the highway, we feel we'd be better served if it was a commercial property. And, yeah, the houses, the income it's generating for our company right now is a single-family home is not, is not enough to help us stay in business.
You indicated you purchased the business that had been in business for 30 years?
Correct.
And when, how long ago was that?
I think it's been about five years that we-
Five years ago? And at the time then, so you were the one that came in with the application in '09, not the previous owner?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that was taken into consideration in '09, that it had been in business for 30 years, even though you were the only, only had been the owner for about three years at the time, it sounds like?
Correct.
And was the, and the kennel was not there at the time?
No, sir. The kennel wasn't, wasn't there. It was a, it was an old house with playground equipment company.
Thank you.
One final question.
Mr. Holder?
Oh, you know, gonna ask Breck this. If this property was zoned commercial, and you have a structure currently that is over the line, I mean, and there's a variance or an easement granted for that, but if you're gonna have commercial to residential, that means his usable is still, there's gonna have to be buffers around, but between the use of commercial property and residential. Am I correct?
That's correct, sir.
So it actually makes his 7.730 acres with two businesses only currently. Is that correct? Of tire store and the kennel?
No. No, sir. The kennel's our neighbor. We have the tire store and a single-family residence out there.
Okay. Then the two structures on the 1.73 acres, correct?
The 0.73, yes, sir.
0.73.
Okay, then he will have to have, if it's zoned commercial, he will have to have a buffer that goes around it based on the ordinance, based on commercial to residential?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right. Since this is a public hearing, I'm going to call for anyone in the audience that wishes to speak in opposition to the applicant's request. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of the applicant's request? Do any board members have any additional questions for the applicant? Mr. Alata?
To Mr., Commissioner Holder's point, and that is, what I'm understanding then by the question and the answers, is that to the extent we do officially make this commercial versus the letter that is allowing the commercial to exist, there then for him would require some type of change to moving the building to create that, that buffer, is that what you're implying?
Some form of variance would have to be, I don't know what's in existence today, but around the entire perimeter of the property, there would have to be a buffer between residential and commercial property.
And the way that structure is right now, I doubt it could be picked up and moved. Is that correct?
Correct.
So if, if what Commissioner Holder is saying, and you continue to pursue this, and if in fact it were to be granted, you'd have to figure out how to wait to chop that building or figure out a way to move it, it sounds like. Is that what I'm hearing?
Well, if I can jump in, a variance was applied for with the zoning advisory board. It was tabled at that time, I guess pending the results of the rezoning request. So that's kind of where we are. So the variance has been submitted for that southern side along where that, where the building is off about two square feet towards the south, also to the north where you see an easement that leads to that eastern property. It's in a 17-acre estate lot. So yes, the applicant has applied for variances. They have been tabled at this time pending the results of this meeting.
Any new results?
Yes, sir.
Madam Chair, I do just want to clarify on the point. Commissioner Alata, to your point, the building that's adjacent on the property line, that's adjacent to another commercially-zoned property. So commercial to commercial, there would not be a buffer requirement. On those sides where there is, where the property does abut residential, then they would be required to incorporate a buffer. But along that side there, they would not be required because it is abut in a commercial property.
So basically changing it to commercial fixes the problem that presently exists? Because if it's zoned residential now, requires a buffer, it has none. If it goes to commercial, the buffer isn't needed, so therefore it fixes the problem?
Yeah, that, yeah, that, that issue could go away.
Okay.
It would still be required to put a buffer on the remaining sides, the remaining two sides.
Are there any other questions or comments for the staff, the applicant?
Chairman, Madam Chair, if I can clarify, the particular variances that have been submitted per the applicant and what is needed in order to meet the C1 standards is the lot size. Currently, the lot size is 0.73 acres, which is just under 3/4 of an acre. They have to have exact 3/4 of an acre being on septic. Also, to the north, there is a 12-foot easement that I spoke of earlier that leads to the property to the east, and they would need a variance on a buffer requirement there to separate a commercial use from a residential use. And finally, there's a request on the southern side where the property abuts the C3 property. There does have to have a 10-foot wide landscape strip, which is required for properties that are commercial abutting another commercial lot. So just to kind of give some clarification on what the variances are.
Okay, and those would be forthcoming if this is approved tonight?
Yes, ma'am. They, they actually would, would go back to the zoning advisory board, most likely in March, and be approved at that time, if, if it is the ZAB's wishes.
Mr. Alata?
I have one more question. Since the non, the letter authorizing the non-conformance was done after the zoning board, because it didn't come before the VOC, now it's before the VOC, and to the extent it is denied, what happens to that letter of non-conformance?
The letter, my understanding, the letter would still be upheld. The current use can continue. However, no additional uses can be operating on that property.
There's a clarification. The item never did come before the VOC.
It came before the zoning advisory board.
Right, but now it's in front of us. So what I'm asking is the step in between that gave them a letter to allow it to continue after it was done but never came here, and now they're here, and if it were to be denied, it would appear that that letter may be null and void because it's been, it's gone through the whole process. That's what I'm asking clarification for.
The letter came up, the letter was initiated by a request from the applicant concerning, there's a condition regarding if it's not in business doing business for, for a certain amount of time, existing non-conforming use, and if that use stops or is suspended for a time period, it would have to go back and revert back to, in this case, RA use. The letter was addressing an extension of that, of the opportunity for the applicant to, because I think at the time, Mr. Herbert, I think I met with you and Mr. Perry, they were seeking another tenant to, to utilize that space as a tire shop. And so the letter was written saying you could continue, you can give an extension of the time in order to give a tenant to use that exact same type of use. And that's what the letter was, in essence, stating, that they can continue the same use as an existing non-conforming use. It was scheduled, it was actually advertised and scheduled to come before the Board of Commissioners, and went back and pulled some of the old, old agendas and old minutes, and it was announced at the meeting that it was, that item was not going to be heard that night. I think it was May 19, 2009. So it was withdrawn either by staff or by applicant. We can have the, that notification on there. But it did not, it never did come formally to the board, although it was advertised. It was announced at the meeting, but it did not, it was not actually heard at the meeting.
So bottom line is, if this were to be denied, he still would be able to continue to operate his business-
As a tire shop.
-in accordance with what was previously on-
As an, as an existing non-conforming use for a tire shop.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question for you. I think you mentioned that for a property to be zoned commercial, it would have to be at least 3/4 acres if it's on septic. In that case, are you saying that this property doesn't meet that requirement?
Yes, it currently does not hit the variances. That's what the various application would come forward for, for the lot size, the, and the buffer.
So what would it mean if that, if it was approved?
If you all deem it necessary or favorable to the applicant to approve the request, we would take the variance since there's no, no action has been taken on it other than to table it. It would go back to the zoning advisory board for approval because the applicant was wanting to hold off on whether the variance would be denied or not so that they could make sure the rezoning was approved. And then clarification, if he does not get the variance approved by the zoning advisory board, and you all approve of rezoning, that he can only still do that current business, which is the tire shop. Because the variance has to be, the variances have to be approved in order to pull permits or business licenses for that single-family dwelling to be a commercial business.
What would that do as far as the future land use map is concerned? Because you're gonna open up a commercial area that currently doesn't exist in that plan, correct?
That's correct. That's right. I think we have the same situation with the commercial property to the south. It is not reflective on either of our previous future land use map or our current future land use map.
So basically, you could see a domino effect of commercial because one property owner after another is gonna be coming in, asking for the same consideration?
Right, as this request was, per, because of the C3 property that's to the south. That's correct.
Is there any other question or comments for the staff or for the applicant? If not, Mr. Holmes, this lies in your district, and I'll look to you for a motion.
Madam Chair, I'm gonna recommend denial based on the, I'm trying to remain consistent with the land use map, and also based on Breck's comments regarding the, the acreage requirements.
We have a motion on the floor to deny the applicant's request. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stany. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you. The next item is a request and an amendment. Is that something we need to move forward with?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. HBMC LLC of Stockbridge, Georgia requests an amendment to the comprehensive plan for property located at 1598 Highway 138 in Land Lot 94 of the 11th District. The request is to change the future land use map designation from rural residential to commercial, and that is going to be exhibit number 18.
Yes, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This is, the previous request was for rezoning, and this is the accompanying comprehensive land use map amendment request coming before you. As I said earlier, the future land use map does designate this area for rural residential uses at this portion of 138, having your core of commercial uses to be located at major intersections and within activity centers. Staff has recommended denial of this request, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Board member have a question for Brecka? This time, I'd like to ask if the applicant would like to come forward and-
The applicant is.
All right. And I guess I can ask if anybody wishes to speak in favor of our opposition? Okay. With the record reflect that no one is, and with that being said, Mr. Holmes, I'll look to you for a motion?
I recommend denial.
Have a motion to deny. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stany. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Moving on to finance, we have a resolution requesting award of a proposal for a golf course management agreement for Cottonfields Golf Course. Our presenter is Mike Bush, Finance Director, and that's handout number one.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board members. Back in October, end of October, beginning of November, we sent out an RFP to change the way that we were operating the current golf course agreement that we had. We were paying a management fee to operate the golf course and provide us with all the revenues that the golf course made. And in year one, the golf course made $32,000. In year two, we lost $25,000. In year three, we lost $41,000. In year four, we broke even because we came back to you back in July and asked to amend the current contract so that we could make it break even period. And we're in that same area. The end of the contract is 12/31, and as of 11/30, or as of the last month that we collected money, and we were still within that, you know, right at the break-even zero for 2011, the fiscal year 2011. So we have sent out an RFP, and basically, this is a contract that the management group that won the RFP bidding process would pay us a certain amount of money every month to guarantee the county never to have a loss on that property as long as it's operated as a golf course. We bought that property several years ago to expand the governmental facility, but until we need to actually expand, we were gonna use it as that golf course for a, to help offset some of the cost of the debt service on that property. So we had, we sent out an RFP, like I say, back in November, received, we had a pre-bid meeting, and we had five different golf course operations, such as the Canning Gate-type, you know, multiple golf course management companies come to that meeting, but only one company actually offered a bid for this package. It is the current property manager that we have today, which makes it easy for a transfer from one way to another because we don't have to have new golf carts come in and new management take over. And they've made an, they, they've agreed to a $2,000 per month contract with the county with a 3% escalator for the first three years. This is a three-year contract. Also with that, the pavilion that sits over there, that is, that, the revenue that comes in from it will be split 50-50 on top of the $24,000 that we will receive for the first year, and then the 24, 760, I think, the second year, with that 3% escalator. So we're here today asking for you to approve this contract with Swinninger, let's see if I get this right, management to operate the golf course for a period of three years.
Does any board member have questions? Mr. Bowman?
All the insurances, liability insurance, and all the other things are paid by the Swinninger Group?
Yes, sir. They are required to maintain the insurances on that golf course.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have a question or comment?
This is a three-year agreement.
Correct. Yes, sir.
What happens when the economy turns around? When people start playing golf again, we'll still, we'll, we'll only collect $2,000 a month?
That is, that is correct for the three-year term. There is, however, a, you know, an out clause in this that they or we can institute over a, you know, for a period of time, we can, they can tell us they want to admit, get out of the contract, or we can tell them we want to adjust the contract. But, yeah, if, if the economy turns around, that, that would be a possible solution.
Any other comments? Mr. Alata?
What requirements with that, as far as, and penalties if it's, if the course is not maintained? I mean, if one were to take the course and just bring golfers out there, of course, the golfers aren't gonna come to a non-fully-kept course, but as far as the maintenance, and I know there's a clause for maintenance and whatever else, are there penalties? And I guess the other is the condition upon which it'll be returned to us three years later specifies that it's gotta be the same condition, whatever that is, or, because in the last year of the contract, again, someone could let the thing deteriorate and make more money off of it for that reason or whatever. So what protections are there in bringing it back, because if we still don't need it in three years and want to continue to rent it, or have somebody else rent it, or lease it, rather, or whatever you want to call it, someone's gonna have to upkeep it before we do that and have it sit there?
That's a good question, and the answer is, there is no penalty. There is nothing that says it has to be returned back in the shape it is. But for those, for this management company to make money, they have to keep the course up to keep people coming to the, to the golf course. That's kind of our safe keep, if you will, is that, you know, for them to actually make money- money and to operate a business, they've gotta keep that golf course up.
You mentioned an insulator, what exactly, what were you saying, an insulator each year?
Oh, an escalator, I'm sorry, escalator.
Okay.
It's $24,000, then 3% over, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's what I thought.
I'm from deep south, sometimes it comes out.
Yeah, I understand it now.
Okay.
What factors were considered when coming up with the $2,000 a month?
When we sent out for, for bid, we, our main concern was to guarantee that Henry County citizens would not have any losses generated by us maintaining a golf course. So, the way we did previously is we paid a management fee, and all, all revenues brought in beyond the operational costs of the golf course came to the county. And in year one, we collected $306,000, and we had paid a management fee of $275,000, so we made money. But then what's happened is the economy has kind of hit, and all golf courses have seen this same type of a decline, and this was something we decided that, you know, in the first two years, we basically netted pretty well even. The third year, we saw another decline, and in that fourth year, that's when the board decided, you know, this is not, we're not gonna continue to, you know, keep bleeding. So, we came up with a way to, these contracts were calendar year contracts, and we're, we work off of a fiscal year type contract, or time period. So, we had a six-month window between our last budget and this end of the cycle, and we came back in and adjusted that budget to where their, the management fee was reduced from $275,000 to like $60,000, and the revenues that way, it made all the revenues come up to help offset the loss that we had during the fiscal year 2011. So, you know, the way, the way it basically worked out was, you know, we, we netted even, and we will net even for calendar year 2011, and the only, I guess not the only thing, because we asked for, you know, insurances and all these other things to be taken care of, but the main thing was to make sure that Henry County was always positive and not negative. So, we're actually looking at a, our last loss was 40-something thousand to a $24,000 income, so it's, you know, it's a swing, and it's in the positive direction for the county and citizens.
Any other questions or comments? If not, you have before you a resolution awarding a proposal for the golf course management, the Swininger Management LLC, and I'll entertain a motion.
So, moving, Madam Chair.
Motion to approve by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? All opposed. Motion carries 4-1, with all let us, Stany, Holder, and Bowman in favor, and Holmes in opposition.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to approval of the minutes, we have November 15 regular meeting minutes. Are there any additions to the minutes? If not, I'll look for a motion for approval. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holder, all in favor? Motion carries 5-0. Did anyone sign up for public comment? Mr. County Manager, anything for public session?
No, ma'am.
This County Attorney?
No, ma'am.
Upcoming meetings and events, all county offices will be closed on the following days in observance of the holidays. Friday, December 23, and Monday, December 26, also Friday, December 30, and Monday, January 2, 2012. Tuesday, January 3, at 9:00 a.m., we have a regular board meeting. And before I ask for a motion to adjourn, want to wish all the citizens of Henry County a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year, and if there's no further business to come before the board.
I have a comment, Madam Chair, I just-
No, no, I'll be very brief, because I know we've been, it's been kind of a long meeting, but we have a number of meetings coming up with our, with the finance, as far as Henry County's concerned, and the, and the kind of shape that the county's in. And it's come to, it's come to several of our attention about some issues that surround certain supplements and things that are, that are actually going on as, as we speak. Not gonna get into them heavily now, but I would like to, you know, just go on record as saying everything's on the table when we meet. And I know there's, there's nine meetings that, that are gonna come up with department heads and division heads, and I know that we'll be meeting an awful lot within the next three to four months, starting the first of the year. And it just felt like that we needed to, you know, put it out there, put it on the table, and just, just say that everything's on the table this next time around. It's gonna have to be, because we're, you know, we've got some issues that we've got to deal with. But anyway, I appreciate the opportunity to make that comment.
Thank you, Mr. Bowman. Yes, I, I know it's probably even more, our citizens are probably even more aware than ever, especially around the holidays, at what type of economy we're all in, and I don't think there's a day that goes by that our finance department is not looking at whatever cuts have to be made in order to continue to provide the services that our citizens have come to expect. And so, we certainly don't look forward to those meetings, but know that it's something that's necessary and that we're gonna have to do. If there's no further business to come before this board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn?
Motion by Mr. Stany, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor? Motion carries 5-0, we stand adjourned.